Okay, the meeting's ordered at six o'clock. Thanks to everybody. Sarah has graciously agreed to, once again, take the minutes, holding a motion to approve her as Secretary of the Town. Also, Secretary of the Library. And all the papers. Approved by the majority. Okay, thank you, Sarah. All right, so you all got a copy of the draft of the April minutes? I want to just remind you that we don't have to vote on these unless there are any changes that need to happen. So are there any corrections to the minutes from the April eighteenth meeting? Okay. So since there are no corrections, the minutes are approved, that's circulated. Also, an announcement. I included this, I think, in the agenda, just pass it around. You all can look down, this is an email from Judith Whiteside about the recording from WC TV. All the recordings that came through now are on YouTube. And there's a link on the bracket at the paper, also at the end of the emails. So that you can click on it and watch any of the minutes from us and any other meetings, not just theirs. Okay, any other announcements? Do you have any other announcements? Okay, Nancy, Friends and Foundation.
Well, the Friends meeting isn't until next week, but the Friends have two events in May. They have the main book sale, which will be in a few weeks, and the Duck Race on the nineteenth. Some of us will probably be there. So both of those are events for Friends to attend.
So they do a table or a non table table?
Hey, hi there. Oh, hi, Hannah. Hi, I see. Yeah. I'm sitting by you.
I'll be careful.
No, I'm walking. Hello, yeah. Hello. Doing okay. Anyway, it's a surprise.
So before we get back to...
We did a town hall.
Before we get back to...
Sign up.
Michelle, we're going to continue on. Before we get back to Nancy's report, I just want to make note that we've got three members of the public here. Michelle Rhodes, one of the Rhodes. And I'm sorry, I don't remember. Can you say it again, I'm sorry?
My safe for nannies and what it means.
Thank you all for joining us. So Nancy, you were saying that you take some of your stuff on Facebook page. Anything else?
The thing that says, overflown good card there.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, my word. We'll be sending out an email soon about that.
And in terms of the Duck Race, are there particular things that attend to what's happening?
Kristin has tried to sign up. She had the last Friends meeting, so someone was signed up, starting at eleven AM. And there was always help needed. I mean, some of us were there, or trustee had his last two.
So if anybody's interested, mention, contact yourself. Anything else from Friends than anybody else does?
So I've got access to both the Friends and the Foundation website. Updating the website and updating content. And updated into the main book sale.
That's so appreciated. They talked about that at the foundation meeting too.
Yeah, it's working for the ticket sales, for the gala. Nobody's confirmed that it's working for the sponsorship yet, but it's soon is. But it is effective.
Anything else from the Foundation?
The Foundation, your last meeting. They said the gala website is up. The company night just happened. They had any state sponsors for that.
They raised about $1,600.
The bridge, the gap fundraiser is ongoing, they ordered science for it. Those guys are already going out for that.
Are they doing anything different in terms of trying to reach a different audience this year?
I don't know, but they're doing it separately from what they've done.
I think that's in the past, they mostly sent those guys out to, they don't make it in the past. They didn't talk about that.
No, they don't.
Anything else from the Foundation? All right, so Director of Support, you all received Patrick's report. And I put on to under new business, spending some more hours, but Patrick addressed that in his report, talking about that Derek Sullivan, town administrator, is looking for funding to open spending for some hours in a way that would not have any impact on the hours here. And the money would be total. There would be things that would need to be done, like tech updates and cleaning staff, we need to pay. Is there anything else that...
No, just the administrator said he's, will look and see if he has the resources. They told him they're not wanting to interfere with the good things that we've been doing here, the progress we're making here. So if we can find the funding for it, if we can get the staff to support it.
So he's looking with an available funding?
Yes, I honestly don't know.
So the, did you send him an amount?
He has his own amount.
Do you know what it is?
It's not a lot, it would be something to open the library part time, mostly it's for staffing. We'd have to find some summer. So you're probably looking at seven to 10,000 dollars.
No, I mean, I like what you said in your report about the, you know, if we require staffing, technology upgrades, encounters. That's great, but you know, if you want to do it, you want to do it right. Did you have anything specific in terms of the hours?
Not yet, I mean, you can see if we, we, you can head post for the positions, summer positions, but it's timeline for the town. Post for beaches, you may want to cover three beaches, but you only get enough applicants for two, you're only going to, like, for two, so. You know, I don't know what we have for staffing, my understanding, and I don't know what the truth is, that there are some issues that come up at town hall that are a little more pressing, what can we do with it?
It makes you proceed with the minutes?
I would think so. But I don't know, I haven't seen this since last week. I don't have any, if we can do it, we will do it. If we can come up with funding for it.
Do you feel the request is still open yet? Do people comment and comment?
Not a lot. Not a lot. The staffs, the past couple of times, even last fall, when we were open the two months, but this was closed. It's pretty quiet, it would take a lot to get services going there again. And as Sarah said, we do it, we want to do it right, as, right as we can.
And if you have the money to hire people, what kind of experience would those folks need to have? Would there still be staffing here, having to go there?
It would have to be, again, I don't know what he's looking at. Ideally, it would be nice to have a professional library librarian there, cover it, maybe use programs. Part-time works would have that. I mean, part of it is you do have, there's union issues involved with that, as well as the stars hiring and salaries and whatnot. You know, the doctors, you know, but I've heard a lot of this, when you have volunteers. There's a lot of training that goes into that, we do. One of the things that is there is, I mean, their staff is over there on their own. Can't start the, I would be a full-time staff person going over there mostly, because the other three full-timers here are busy with some activities here. Not that I'm not, but. So somebody could have to supervise. Again, if it's really, unfortunately, it's in a fellow marriage state right now, you know, I just don't have any. Any, it's just the one thing that I've been clear on with him, and he understands too, that there's some disagreements, that I just don't want that to interfere with what we have going on here. The progress we've made here, we get people back. We do the things that we, in some ways, we become a major part of the successes here. People want to hear, like, we're not offering other services, it's just, still, not fully funded here either, so.
I keep thinking in my mind, since this came up, that along the lines of what you put in your report, that if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. And then I would add to that in my brain, I want to do it so that it's successful. What would successful, what would it be, what were some of the metrics that would let us know that it was worth it? Do you have that in your mind at all?
You'd have to see, truly, you'd have to see usage. I mean, what we've seen, that would be a big thing. When you reopen two summers ago, we averaged seven people a day. And that includes, like, I don't say this to be funny, but I mean, I got to the point that I counted the drunk guy that came in very frequently on my Tuesday morning shifts, going in. What do you have to do, and what happened? Just as a person going in. You've got to see usage, because even the two months that that was, the remaining library in town, as you see in the staffs, sort of plummets, it's, it's, it's a big work. And that's, it's people that want to see it open, need to be using it. And that's really where the metrics are. And it would take time, too, in regard, it would have, similar to here, you know, when we reopened after COVID and these certification story hours, didn't have that many people. It takes time to build. I will say that this start-stop, start-stop doesn't hold it much.
I guess the question I would ask is, why was he looking for staffing when there was no motivation?
Because we don't have, basically, right now, the past, not so much September October, but two summers ago, when we opened, the only way I can send staff from here there is I'd have to shut here there. Yeah, and so that's, that's why it needs staffing.
No, no, I understand it, staff, I was just wondering if there was a motivation from the public that they wanted the service there?
I think there's been a lot of comments from the public as far as social media and whatnot. And I think the town administrator does a good job of trying to answer the call within what we can do within the town's budget.
I know, as I've been out and about for whatever reason, like, I think I've heard that a lot. A lot of positive reaction, and it's, well, it's kind of being talked about. But that's why I wanted to know, if we open it, sort of, if we build it, who will come?
Well, there is that. You know, when we had, I think we had an idea for the staff from a while ago. Two summers ago, now, I don't know by month, so it's not purple down, but for the twenty, summer of 2022, we were open May and June as well, but this is fiscal year 23. So for the month of July, August, and September that spending was open, we checked out four hundred, four hundred and fifty items. Here, we checked out just shy of 22,000. So it's, it is a matter of, like I said, I think the metric, the door count shows that surprisingly, in the months, you had a hundred and five people show up in July, and then it dropped down to September, we only had thirty. And that, like I said, staff, we got to the point, we started counting. Anyone that came through the door to count as a person. So I think the metric, fortunately, this is, if you build it, they come, and they, they will come, well, like, people leave out. Because that's sort of what it is.
If it is going to be open, though, there needs to be some kind of significant marketing to get the door out there. And then, I think, if there are, you know, you're thinking that that's more that you would have to do, or would you be, or somebody to help with that?
It would be like any other program that we do, start the work, and we will do it, but we will start the work and see it. I don't think it's so much that the lack of people knew it was open, both times. We had a lot of comments in September and October, people that didn't want to come, but it was the main library, because of parking. And we called up and said, your books are here, because we brought all of those over. I can't tell you the number of people that said, just send them back. Some of the ones that were calling for spending people, so.
I mean, we have a bunch of people who would put any public comment at the end, but keep it to a minimum, open it for public comment, and, like. No, like I said, we can open it now.
Oh, okay. Have you done any kind of comparison with other libraries in small towns that would compare to where?
There aren't many that have branches. Most libraries, you focus on one, especially in where your size is, you focus on one library. And, but as I say, those libraries that do have branches, Plumbet being one, Dartford being one, and Not the Sound, and Not Kind of Sound, whatever, but those libraries fund not only the main library, but they fund the branches too. Right now, you're not funding the main library either. So my, as the Friends have been told, and I have told everyone, you can unlock a door, and that's great, for what type of services are you providing? You don't want to be a product of what you have here, in order to just unlock a door. So for instance, in the email, what I do say, which I don't think it's necessarily that hard to reach, but it is one of the things to look at. Technology, technology was great when that building opened. But in summer 22, we realized those computers were, that were there were about six, seven, eight years old. They were really past end of life. And so when we opened last fall, there was the main library, we brought laptops over and took those computers out, but they were just so far gone. Like, we, they, they, they had Windows on, they had just passed Chrome, whatever, right? You can't bring the laptops over this time, because you can use it here as for courses and whatnot. You haven't had new materials purchased there since it was last opened on the way to the basis. So there's no collection there that's, is up to date. So again, it's a matter, again, that's not necessarily something that's, you know, broken. And most of the checkouts that occurred in September, October, were holds placed from other libraries that people did. They weren't checkouts of materials and spending. And again, it's, you've got to build a whole, you're basically, for that branch, you're opening, you're opening a library, and it started from scratch. So expectations for having usage, no, they're not there, it takes time to build. But it's more than just unlocking, even as the Friends say, you know, the holds and programs there, things like that. In 2022, we did hold programs in Marsha, in the Marsha, in Story Hours there. She found at the end that nobody came. I had a big Ryan there, who's a well-known storyteller in this area, he started off doing a six-week program, and started off, but, and then by the end, we had nobody. So it's, it's, it's building, it's getting resources in there, it's getting people in there. It's not just unlocking a door. And I, as I like to say, it's right now, you have such a small budget here, that to dilute the resources, if you want to think of it as like, you know, growing up, I liked Tang, that powdery drink, and I think it was like a scoop per cup. And I have one scoop left, but now you've come over to visit, you want a glass. I still only have one scoop of Tang left. Now Sarah's come over, she'd like a glass. Now Ollie's come over, she wants a glass. Well, pretty soon, we just got kind of milky or orangey colored water without much flavor, because we've diluted what the resources that we had. And that's, that's my fear, if I'm going to provide library service, I'm going to provide food library service, because that, to me, is what the area is made of.
I apologize, I called you when it rose before. I apologize, I called you when it rose before. I called you by the wrong last name.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay.
Go ahead.
I, my experience, experience, was that when you changed the reading to the afternoon, kids are napping, the ones that walk out to the story time. And that's why that felt, I believe, myself, personally. Because when it was in the morning, seating room, they were sitting on the logs and on their mission, and everything else like that. But when you changed, sometimes it was the afternoon.
Yeah, most of those went out in the morning, from what Marsha told me, were from the Head Start class down the street. Big Mark, people just coming in, it was a class walking down from Head Start.
See, the plus is you bring them.
But even the big Ryan program reminded that was a Tuesday morning, and that. But that's, again, when I say that we are victims of our own success, and that's the quote. I mean, Marsha has to do story hours at times, or in our case, even here, that she is able and not on the desk to do it. So we're trying to figure out, because right now, we're Wednesday morning story hours, have sixty people in there, which is just not, that's not conducive, and it's not good, and it's rare, but it's not good for that. But the problem is, if she moves it to here, she's on the desk, how do we do it? If we move it to here, there's only two of us working. But again, the resources here aren't fully where they need to be. So that, again, is why I've said, if we open spending this summer, because the town administrator tells, I don't want to dine on resources from here going over to there, because I think we've got too much we're trying to do here. Not to dilute the product, basically.
That's constantly in the second channel. And I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I don't.
A lot of people ask, how come it's not open? And then they go, it's not there. And I see people putting them in the drop box, books, so I don't know if it's been checked lately.
I would turn around and lock up, so I don't know what they're doing over there.
I didn't see if they turned around and came back when their books were. Because I go, oh, it's sad to see all the work that we did for the volunteers to build out, for it to sit there. And one thing that's, I think, is bad, it's set back, nobody knows what's in it. A big building in the front, now, all the ones on the side, they go right by. And we used to have a nice flag, because even a pipe in the ground, I don't know what happened, that flag was downstairs, it was saying open. You know, and we just put it out, and people would see it now.
The parking is an issue there, too.
I know it would be more, but it was never looked into, like, having people parked here, and also people over.
Well, you have, the one thing you have now that you didn't have, that is after it does sound, it's through town, if you didn't have the last thing.
Okay, anything else?
I'd like to ask about the network thing.
Well, my history, yeah.
Yeah, I was asking, no, I was just asking anything else about the spending for...
Yeah, I have one more thought. You were talking, was it June, July, August, September, and October that you talked about before?
It was May through September.
May, that's a lot. So potentially, maybe it would be June, July, August.
That truly will all depend on the hiring process, which is out of my control.
But instead of finding a good issue, does it make sense to try to plan it for next year, or maybe run it off to?
Sure. Excuse me. Teenage years, sure. It's, it's, you know, again, this is the town administrator account, we don't have the resources here to do it, so this is on, and, you know. I'm grateful to him for wanting to provide the resources for that, it is one that we could look at eventually, but again, it still would be the same unless the resources have to come from across the street, basically, in order to do it. As I've told the Friends repeatedly, I mean, I'm not opposed to having the spending open, I just don't want to provide that library service. I mean, that just, to me, is not, at that point, I'd rather have no library service than just have library service, because that would cost a lot of spoo. So yeah, no, I think if it does work out, I don't know. At the top of my hand, it's the hiring of staffing, I don't know how the town does with getting candidates, or even some of the seasonal, other seasonal positions.
It strikes me that seasonal, potentially seasonal position, it might attract people to certain, moderate people, say, hey, you could work in a nice town, plan for that now, make sure that we have the funding available now, or next year, and then it would have the right kind of support, rather than just, you know, a thousand dollars in the budget, do something for that.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Would it make any sense if this group of citizens talked to Derek?
I think he's heard. I think he's heard, he's, he's the one that brought this up, so I think he's heard, and then, again, it's a matter of, if it's timeline, we can get it through, if he has the money. And truly, I don't think, if there are things going on in town hall that are kind of bigger, you know, he's got to deal with that stuff first, and prioritize them. And that's all stuff out of our control, I don't, I don't think it's a matter of going to see where it could, again, he's the one that brought it up, and he knows, and that's why it's a problem.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have more, um, here about that next week?
Yeah, no, as soon as I hear anything, I'll certainly let you all know, and we'll have to, word out, I'm sorry.
Um, so, what was that, the?
Oh, I'm sorry, the thing?
I was just wondering, on the same sort of thing, why are there people in the town that are really considering spending opening again? What if we did a survey, just to see how many people are interested within the community? And we want to see, even open, just, even if it's just one day a week, to give you time to build it up. I know that Kathy Bones is back at Head Start, and she had left, she, you know, she's really committed to that program. But I think if we could do a survey and get a sense of how many people are really interested, we have a lot of alternative families, and possibly we have people, because we have a lot of, some people. And see what we get back in return to make a decision, or whether or not it's something to consider here, because I feel bad that that building is closed.
I don't know of it so much. I think the interest is there, I mean, people will circulate, again, it's, it's a matter of, of getting the resources.
But I think also in the survey, we need to put in there, what time to be the best, most convenient for the community, so that people work, and then get it sorted. What would be the best times of the day to have a place open? So that you can be successful, you want to get all those questions in there.
So that you can be successful, you want to get all those questions in there to make it worthwhile if it's considered to open down.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's a good idea, but I wouldn't really want to rush it right now only because if we don't get the resources, I don't want to build people's hopes up so much. And then basically, we also as staff take a lot of heat for that, that not being open. And it really doesn't have anything to do with us, but I can't blame the number of people that have come in and been not pleasant with us, even at that. So I have not tried to build up hopes because again, it does matter with getting the resources here. And if the resources don't come, or we can't get the staffing to do it, it's not kind of happened this year. I think Rich has a good idea, but we can certainly look towards next summer and then there's something.
And I think that's what you were talking about.
So we can certainly see if it doesn't work out this summer, I mean, then maybe. I think it would be very hard.
The survey is an interesting vehicle to get the conversation early, knowing when people were interested in there, how it might affect them.
And getting the word out further makes the community.
Right, exactly. Because a lot of new people have come into the community, right on the spin, it's been a while. So can that, that go go support for Derek giving them up?
Well, I mean, I would see the survey being something a little better if we do get it and we open this summer and do it that way. Because remember, we were open there September and October, the same hours that we're open here. So we were open Monday through Saturdays, open every day at nine until eight on Tuesday, Wednesdays. And we were open until five, three on Friday, Saturdays, Mondays. And again, you can look at the door counts.
And that was in twenty-two?
That was this past fall, when we were there for.
Oh, 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 right.
And it was the main library, it was the library service here. So.
Well, I think that maybe speaks to the need to really be creative about any kind of marketing that we did.
Yeah.
Clearly, just doing the, what we have normally done, didn't work to get people to go there.
I knew we were there.
Right.
I agree with you, I'm just saying that is, I mean.
So, but that one, I think part of the, you know, planning, if it's going to happen for next year, is really figuring out what kind of creative marketing can we include in this? Okay, we're gonna have to move on. Hold your other question for a second. Did you have anything else about your team, director's report?
No, just like I said, if I hear anything, I will certainly, I mean, we'll have to hear the word out.
And then, which you kind of plus them up.
So it's just, I've been a part of a business-to-business networking group, which shows the importance of the library to the business community. Kind of our, like number of the month, because they assign points with, you know, you want to launch your contact. And that's basically a lot of our programs that we've had this past winter have been from members of the networking group, so. Basically, used it to ease a line way to the top.
Kudos, good job.
All right, so, on to the business. Officers for next year, beginning September one. So we can't really have a full conversation about this because we don't know what's happening with Sarah.
Right.
We hope that she's the elect into the select board. Unfortunately, that means they're going to use her here. We just lost two other people for personal reasons who went and stepped down from the board. I'm leaving at the end of my term. And so that leaves three, possibly four, to begin the next term unless we have, then some of the people who stepped forward before that. We did have some preliminary conversations with people about the office positions for next year. The Thor lady will be talking about it now today and putting, having a slate for people to think about. And then approving that slate in June at the June meeting. But with not knowing Sarah's status, we had, Sarah had had talked prior to her running for select board about whether she would be interested in being in the chair. And she had said definitely that she would. And she did think that that would be the best way forward here, but I don't think that was going to happen. So I just want to tell you about the conversations that I had briefly with folks and then we can have a little conversation about it, but we really just need to be thinking about it and getting some, have some other individual conversations with people in between the meetings. So Wendy has said that she would absolutely, can I say that? Be interested in being the secretary.
Which is okay, I don't have to.
Right, yes, I know. Which would be great because nobody wants that job. Nobody wants to take the minutes, you know, what's involved in that. And then that would be the chair, vice chair, to be sorted between Rich and Nancy. There might be a possibility of it being a co-chair position. And if you offer, you know, elements of that, and you can sort out who's going to be responsible for what parts of the responsibilities. Or it could be a straight chair or co-chair. But that's sort of where we are right now. Can't really do much else until we know that it was also the election. But does anybody have anything they want to add to thinking about that?
If it does end up being a co-chair position, I might be able to start. I just don't have the time and the energy to do the job.
That's true, we had talked about that, I'm sorry, I forgot that. But we did talk about that, I think they'd be interested in sharing the chair position with somebody else, in which case then she wouldn't be the secretary. And the option at that point, but then maybe we need to revert to what we did a couple of years ago, which was rotated. And then each person take the minutes for one time and then, you know, leave it to somebody else. None of it's great, but it speaks to something that we have to talk about a little bit later, which is increasing the membership of the justice. Does anybody have anything else to add about this lady? Hopefully, we will be able to pull something together. All right, so the June twenty now update, if anybody wanted to add to that.
Yeah, no, real news, this is May, and the game is in June, June twenty-eighth. So we've got Save the Day ad ran in this past week. We're going to be, we've got another one running in next, this week, so we can. Week, and it's just, everybody's trying to do their best to sell tickets, get sponsorships, auction items.
Is that ad up on the Facebook page too, for the foundation? Absolutely, share it.
I know.
Save the Day? That's what the ad is.
I think the Save the Day gets up. Somebody else will do that.
Something, I think they could be sharing it.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think it was, not that they had to, somebody was going in, but it's like, I just.
All right, if you need the PDF, I have it. Yes, I know. I forget you're on those news.
All right, taping activities through June, other than the duck race. I don't really know of anything else that was happening. Last year, on the Onset Bay Center, did that open the venue day. But I haven't seen anything about that, you know? Anybody there doing anything this year?
Not many till next week.
Well, it wasn't the association, it was the Onset Bay Center. I don't remember, but it was probably in May sometime. It was a lovely day. We had chosen to have a table inside, just in case it back there, which turned out to not be a great idea. Because most ever, they had a lot of things going on outside and there are a few people in the side. But we had a great table set up. It was a great start.
So we're still planning on having the western, the table at the Western Festival?
Not that I'm aware of. The only thing that we talked about was that my lead was going to be talking to Nora Vicky about whether we could have the, um, the bell of K Bay. And then she was unable to, I'll agree with that, so. If you all want to continue to try to make that happen, we'll talk about that. But somebody would need to first have that conversation with Nora. I don't think it's very likely that it would be great. I know that would be a, I think, last year, I had a table there. Other nonprofits did too, so I'm not sure. How do you guys want to try to have a table there? I mean, this sort of speaks also to the next item about the proofing. That we are doing something there, and the duck race. It's really up to you all to start to figure out what else you might need to do so that you can start, you all can start the next year, stronger position as possible. Any thoughts? And we did a whole lot of work. Not this year, but the previous year, we were able to put together that list of organizations that we could contact, talk to about the library, and followed up on some of that. And I think there's, I don't know, if there's any interest in contacting those organizations again, some kind of.
I haven't seen that, do that have yours?
Yes, yeah.
I don't know what makes sense where this is going.
This was a list of organizations and where we had contacted people at that point. I don't know if they, still be the same, but some of them.
Yeah, what kinds of things might start to go away?
Okay, all right, I'll set that up for you again. Okay, anything else?
Just the foundation still has the common fundraiser out, the women's gathering.
So that's Caramello?
Okay, so then the only other thing on the agenda is the meeting room policy. Patrick sent out an email describing this thing, you can kind of put this together. And then the policy, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to review it. Is there anything you would say about it, Patrick?
No, just that it, as I said in the email, it's not really changing what we do now. It is clearing out some things. For instance, in the current policy, we focus on library programs, local government, for-profit. There's nothing in there about on-profits. Right now, we do open up the room. And on the sign-in sheet, there's nothing that tells me when a group is filling out the application, what timeline, what level of work. But beyond that, a lot of it is, really, I guess, as I said in the email copy, West Rose and Beverly's, because I like theirs, the language. But a lot of it is just codifying what we do already kind of noncurrently. So a couple of things I will mention on there. We do mention frequently that the library doesn't endorse programs in here. Court cases have dictated we have to be, and we've been doing that anyway. So that's, for instance, even the bulletin board, the signs. You know, we have one bulletin board for groups, the other's for library. If you look at our event calendar, you do notice that even when the land trust is meeting, I put not a library program, just so that people know it's not a library program so we don't promote, we don't endorse. I do not have the activity room as a, I've taken that off because we don't rent, lease that out to others. That is kind of set up permanently as activity room for children's programs here. And so we don't rent it up. The conference room, I have added in at some point, I would like to take that out, but I have available as needed. But just because in normal times, there's staffing back there, the people who wouldn't use the room. And I can't tell you how many times the first year when I was here that I gave that room or booked it for smaller groups. And you'd come out and see people because it's a parlor through Kathy's desk looking for, you know, pens and papers or whatever, going into the staff room. So we really only book that when there is a staff person back there, which unfortunately isn't often. Spiny is listed because obviously these, all of these rooms are only available during library hours. So obviously, Spiny's room is available if, if and when it's open. One of the things we also have in there quite a bit is, that's mentioned a couple of times in various ways, is basically if your meeting will disrupt normal library services, we reserve the right, because you can't technically block anybody from eating, but obviously, if it's something that might disrupt normal residents, that's sort of where court cases have fallen with this. And then the only other thing, as I've mentioned, is there's not much with quiet study area. Most of those with everything in West Rose and other libraries, they actually have small study rooms, which is why I said I wasn't wet into this. We have study carols, it's pretty much come in, grab them. But at the same time, I kind of, my thinking is, I'd like to vacuum that if somebody is doing something wrong back there, that the staff does have some technique to be able to say, no, you can't have five people in a study carol. No, they can't be whatever, even though it's not a separate room. So that's sort of where we're at with this. Like I said, just codifying what we generally are doing anyways.
Anybody that have any comments or questions about?
I had a silly question. I know, it's such, because it's a public meeting space, everybody has to be allowed it, you can't charge using admission for things?
We generally don't. The room, that's one of the rooms, that's where you're for profit, maybe you could charge it. I just really don't want to open that can of worms right now. That's why I said in the email, at some point, we could look at it later. Right now, we don't have a lot. But this room, this room and the rooms do get booked probably enough right now, but you know, want to get in.
Right, no, I was just thinking, what if somebody was trying to fundraise for the library?
No, that falls under the friends and the libraries. So they can charge, that's a little bit, but generally, so the idea behind that is if you are, I'm trying to think of an example. So for instance, the photo organizer I got this last week, she's part of the networking group. She actually does represent a particular photo, online photo organization company. She did not promote that company. So, and so she's not out making sales, charging, you know, people to come into her meeting and all that. It's just, hey, here's how to organize photos. And if you're interested more, sure, reach me, you know, here's your contact, I'll reach you after. So you don't want the room set up that, I don't know, the realtor is, I'm quite not great, I don't know, the yoga place coming in to do a yoga studio, charging customers, because again, that also creates a whole other set of liabilities that, what happens when, I don't know, that, was it mineral, the facial body mineral things are a big lot now. It starts creams, and suddenly that person buys that cream and it makes them break out and acne all over the place.
But if you want to ever book a room for a child's birthday? Would anyone ever book a room for a child's birthday party?
People about.
And?
No.
What's the answer?
Again, that's in the private, no, no private, no one, no personal. Basically, even the, um, the very generic way of putting it is all meetings are open to public. So when the girl scouts want to meet here, that meeting is, you know, we can all go enjoy that meeting. A little creepy, but, you know, all meeting, any meeting that's out here is open, open to anyone.
Would it be a certain kind of liability if, that you would say no anyways, so?
Well, it's like, but that wouldn't be our, yeah, no, we wouldn't rent out our, we have our claims service.
Yeah.
The one thing that probably would, should be in there, but I can't, is no clerk.
Um, this one, uh, small thing on the second page, under applications and scheduling. Um, one, two, four, five, six bullet point down that begins, library staff, preserve the rights, cancel, et cetera.
Sorry, wrong word.
On the second page.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Under applications and scheduling.
Yes.
A bullet point that begins, library staff, preserve the right, cancel.
Yeah.
Um, on the third line, where it says, within the sole discretion of the library director or his/her designated.
Yeah.
I'd suggest that we take out his/her and just have a be of the library director or designated.
Okay.
And then there's no gender issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will say too, the one other minor thing is, uh, on the first bullet point on that, uh, I just have a kind of a placeholder for the reservation form available at the right entry button. It's, you know, holding on the, uh, when it puts someone's, it's often approved by across the screen and all that. And that's the one thing that will change after funding the committee.
And you know what, I didn't, I did not click on that. I printed it out, so if I had looked at it online, I would have clicked on that.
No, that just would have brought you to the...
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so... Because one of the things I also noticed on our website, again, from this carryover from the old one, is the application forms in one spot and meeting room policies in another. So that means...
Yeah. Put them in. Well, thank you for putting this together. Do I have a motion to review, I mean, to approve this with the, um, two fractions that we discussed? Um, Sarah and executive by Rich, all in agreement, in Japan, five zero zero approved. Okay, and then, um, the last thing on there is the library rules feature, meeting room policy.
I don't know that.
I know, excuse me, but do you think you might be...
I said, I don't know.
Get that, I don't think.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Well, who put it on your agenda? Sorry, I'm going to choke. Okay, anything else?
I just had a question for Mindy. Um, I didn't know where to ask about this, but you had talked about the duck race when you were talking. Would you want to talk about it some more and have any ideas?
Uh, well, Mindy, you're selling the ducks, because I know that Kathy's, I know someone who can decorate a lot of the ducks. She can buy ducks, so I can decorate them.
Yeah, whoever.
Yeah, you don't have to decorate the ducks that much.
Right, because she wanted to decorate them in some sort of theme.
I wanted to do like a dressing gown.
Although they are going to have materials there for people to, uh, put their names or any decorations after they've had the ducks, as I understand it.
Oh, but you don't understand, one is a mask. Love the ducks. It's not just the duck.
Well, that's, that's a wonderful thing.
I mean, I only entered two duck races, and I didn't have to go.
So Brian, you're...
Yeah, the second one we gave it, I was with the P G station then, so we said, no, let's kick it, man.
So if you could get the ducks ahead of time, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, if, well, um, they sold us in the last week, so... Oh.
We haven't met the ducks.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't met the ducks.
Oh, there was, there was one duck race we could give.
Yeah, no, we haven't viewed.
All right, I'll go, I'll go there after.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I can borrow that.
I also saw that Davey's hearts today too, so I'm sure that's important. Conversation with yours.
Yeah.
All right, so the one that, that was also for that.
Yes, that's what that's all about. I mean, we should be able to see people at our events that are, you know, the big events like the Phoenix Clubhouse and the, and the, remember?
Okay, next meeting is June fourth. So if you aren't your calendar ahead for the rest of the year, make sure you change it to the first Tuesday of the month, that's six o'clock, June fourth. So, six fifty-five, I have a motion to adjourn. So, Nancy, and second, first second, okay? Anybody opposed?
I'm two zero.
Okay, approved by zero zero. All right, thank you.